The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events, and for all of our staff members, both the teaching and support members. We ask that you bless them abundantly as they continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with them in deliberations and give wisdom in decisions made for the good of all those who have placed trust and confidence in their leadership. Give insight to lead with integrity that decisions may reflect what is right and good. We pray against confusion or strife and pray for unity of heart and mind. Dear Lord, grant humility to always seek your will in all that is said and done. Finally, we ask that you be with each board member, administration member, teacher, support member, student, and their families during this season as we celebrate the birth of your son. In January, bring each one back with a renewed hope that will last throughout the rest of our school year. All glory be to you, Father, now and forever. We pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, beautiful. Thank you. Yes.
Is she here, y'all?
No one has come in?
No ma'am.
All right. At this... At this time, we will have our presentation by Mrs. Renee Huff on our Avid program.
I feel truly honored to be in the presence of these wonderful ladies today. Erin is got... Well, she's got a heart as big as Ms. Crawford when it comes to our children, and so does Ms. Bernie and Ms. Huff. So it is a pleasure to have them here today.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, board. Today...
Your baby.
Your babies. Okay. Today, I want to share with you our Avid program at Palatka High School. We're going to bring Crescent City into it another time, but today, we're going to spotlight and showcase our Palatka High School program. And I have with me today Amanda Bernie, who is my co-director for Avid, and she's been working with the students and the teachers and the different programs and the principals. And we have Erin McNeil, who is our Avid elective teacher at Palatka High School. And I'm going to turn this over to Erin because she has brought her wonderful students to share with you today.
Hi, thank you for having us. First, this will be the first graduating class of seniors for Avid, so I want them to come on up. Seniors only, seniors. Give it up for my seniors.
Yeah, put them in the front.
All right, I'm going to read a little bit about these seniors. Rikasia, come over here, sweetie, so I can read it. Y'all go around, Rikasia. All right, 100% of these students have applied to a college or university. 60% have a GPA over 3.0, over a 30. 94% have either started or completed their FAFSA. 100% have been on at least six college visits. 100% have taken either the ACT or the SAT. 60% have played a sport while in high school. 100% have been involved in an extracurricular activity while in high school. And 50% have been... I can't talk about them. I got them for three years. And...
Well, that's kind of how we feel about you when we see you up here teaching.
50% have been involved in Palatka High School Student Council. 100% have worked while maintaining a rigorous course load. 100% feel that they are college and/or career ready. 100% are on track to graduate.
Awesome. That's fantastic.
Okay, so they know I love them. So now I'm going to let them say what Avid's done for them. Who wants... Jeffrey Stewart.
Oh, he was the mayor last Thursday. He was the mayor.
Hey, y'all.
Hey.
Um, Avid has done a lot for me. It kept me out of trouble, get me on track in school, keep me with a good grade. First nine weeks of this year, I got all As.
Wow.
It get us ready for college. Ms. McNeil took us on a... Well, Ms. McNeil and our chaperones took us on a lot of college tours, and it gave us leadership skills and roles.
Wonderful. Very good. Thank you.
You will be leaders, I guarantee you that.
He was the mayor last Thursday at the city commissioners meeting.
Oh. How'd he bump you out of the seat?
No, no, not as mayor.
All right, Demonte. Thank you, Jeffrey. Next is Demonte Ashley.
That's another one of your boys. Yeah.
How y'all doing? Avid for us is... It's been like just love and like family when you come into the classroom with Ms. McNeil. She helped a lot of us, like even when we have like tests that we have to study for, like she helped us prepare for that and like she just always been there. She like a teacher that you can go to, and the program is just full of love. And then, um, she helped with a lot of college applications. She helped make sure that we take the SAT, the ACT, all that, so we can have our scores for colleges. And she just have been preparing us for life, and that's just how it is.
And so where did you say you were going to go to college?
Uh, family.
That's that strike. That's that rattler's strike. Yes, that's our mascot.
Leah, did you want to say something?
Hi, I'm Leah.
Hi, Leah.
Um, Avid means to me is like the light in the dark because I wasn't going to make it far at all. If it wasn't for Ms. McNeil and the school and this whole program, I wouldn't be nothing at all. Point blank period, I was struggling for a while, but she kept pushing me, kept pushing me. Even when I didn't want her to, she still kept pushing me. But, yes, but Avid is great. It's worth all of it.
And so you would recommend it to...
100%.
Cousins or anybody that's coming in.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Wesley Roberts. Wesley is the star of the basketball team. Oh, as well as Monte and DeShawn. I better include everybody. I'll get in trouble.
Um, how y'all doing?
All right, Wesley.
I'm Wesley. Avid to me, like Ms. McNeil, she's like a mother to all of us. She helps us with SAT scores, made us complete our FAFSA. That's for sure. I recommend the younger class to get into Avid. It's a great program, and if you care about your future, you're getting Avid.
Oh, that's great.
That's about it.
So have you made a decision?
No ma'am. I'll let you know though.
Do any other seniors want to talk? All right, I'm going to have my juniors. We left the sophomores at home. Different story. And my freshmen, come on up. I've got two freshmen.
We're going to need Ms. Gillyard and the superintendent to get a picture of them.
Do I have any ju... Do we have time to have any juniors or freshmen talk, or do y'all...
Please let them talk.
Any juniors? Do any juniors want to talk?
Yes.
Please talk because what you're doing is going to affect the future of a lot of other kids.
Come on, Ms. Turner.
Hey, everybody.
This is the star of the girls' basketball team. Let me give her her credit, please.
But, um, Avid, the program itself is real beneficial and everything like that, but another key part to play into it is the person who taking the time out every day, every year, and coming and actually teaching and putting it all together. Like everybody else said, Ms. McNeil, she worked real hard with us. It's like, it don't matter what it is, she just there for everybody.
Hats off to you, Mrs. McNeil.
Thank you. I love you.
Thank you.
Jairis, come on up.
How y'all doing?
Fine.
My name is Jairis. This is my first year in Avid, you know? Like they were saying, I already feel like I'm a part of the family and stuff. You know, like I never had all As before, like in my whole school career, but like this was my first time getting all As. I always had like good grades, but like, you know, she really took the time out to help me. That's it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, Dylan, come on up.
My name is Dylan. Good afternoon. So Avid for me, this is my first year, and I didn't think I would like it because I thought it was just going to be more work and just too much because everybody knows high school is a lot of work because you're going into college. But it was really, it feels like a family to me to know that I have Ms. McNeil there to get me through everything. And if I'm having a rough day, Ms. McNeil will call me over and be like, Dylan, are you okay? Do you need to stay here? And it's just like she's a mom to us. It's not like she's a teacher because she treats us like a mom too. If our grades are bad, she'll get on to you. She'll take your phone away. She's not afraid to take yourself because if your grades are bad, Ms. McNeil does not allow that.
Dylan, she gets on to me the same way.
Oh, I'm sure. And it's nothing... If it wasn't for Ms. McNeil, I don't think that I would be, I would have the grades I have. I have all As, and I hopefully am going to get all As on my second report card. And it's never happened for me in my academic career, and I'm very proud of myself, and I'm very happy to have Ms. McNeil as a teacher.
Hello, my name is Leondra Mulberry, and I just want to say that Avid is so much more than what people think it is with the program. It takes a teacher who believes in us and is determined to help us while we are trying to help ourselves and better ourselves. And I just want to say that Ms. McNeil, she takes the time out to try to find different ways for us to become a better student and make grades that we should be able to do. And I want to thank her.
We hope to come back next semester to do a demonstration with Interlocken High School of philosophical chairs. So we'll get that scheduled. That's one of the big Avid strategies.
We're challenging Interlocken High.
I have a couple of questions for you to get to.
I do, too, when you're through.
Erin, how many periods a day do you have Avid classes?
Four.
Four periods?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a prescribed curriculum, and do you have any leeway with that?
Yes, ma'am, and Ms. Bernie helps me as well.
Well, she's a good one to help.
I mean, my freshmen, of course, are going to be doing something totally different than the seniors, so it's just like...
So each year it builds on the names?
They are not... They used to be mixed in when we first started, but this year, Mr. Stout allowed us to separate them so we can concentrate on what the grade level needs to be doing.
Ninth, and tenth, and eleventh, and twelfth? Thank you.
Janer, you got any more questions? I was going to tell the kids and these young men and women with Avid that having someone who you know loves, loves and cares about you and wants you to be successful makes a difference in everything you do. When you come to school, you may have a teacher in another class that have a bad day and they don't seem like they care, and you can sit there and you don't accomplish much. But I have to say that I think that Ms. Bernie and Ms. Huff and Mr. Stout have picked a wonderful person because the teacher...
Thank you, even if my hair is dyed.
The teacher, I didn't say that, even... But it is darker than normal. But I have to tell you, matching the right personality up where you'll have a significant relationship with an adult that will help guide and make you feel comfortable and you can confide in and will push you to your limits will make you go higher than you would ever imagine. And I think the superintendent and all the board members know that. We're looking at a pamphlet on our desk about where, you know, about the mostly elementary school experience and how kids come from tough situations, but they can still make it if they have somebody who has the time to love and care about them. If the state would put the emphasis and give the district the money to hire more people like Ms. McNeil, everybody could be successful. But that's the problem. Everybody makes a political crazy ordeal out of education instead of making it what it really should be. And it's about each and every one of you taking care of all of us old folks when we get out there on the street. And I'm so proud of all of you. That's to hear that you've never had As and now you've got As and you're working hard. It makes me feel incredibly proud that Ms. Mace, Ms. McNeil came back. Ms. McNeil came back and went to work here in Putnam County. So that's all I want to say.
Ms., um, Huff does... Yeah, DeShawn is going to read the Avid mission for us. Can you read it, Shaw?
Avid, Avid's mission is to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in global society.
Okay, and in closing, we just want to say to you that in four years to our seniors, we expect you, if at all, your career path would head back to Palatka, we could certainly use you. You know I saw you, and you know what the mayor told you and challenged you.
You can be wherever you want to be.
And I want to commend you because I see something happening that even adults don't do. When someone is speaking, they're looking directly at that speaker, and that's commendable. Don't look down at anybody because that sends a negative impression of you. Look them square in the eyes you're doing now, and I promise you, you're going to go far like Mr. Buckles said. And when you go away to college, please don't tell folk you're from somewhere else. Be proud of Palatka, of Putnam County, and where you're from. I had fakers there when I went to A&amp;M that used to tell people they were from Miami, didn't want to say they were from Palatka, but now I bet they would. So I'm, we're proud of you, all of you, and definitely you're going to go far, every one of you. Thank you. I have one last thing I want to say to you, especially those of you who play sports, because I've seen that crazy woman at y'all's games.
Hey, they know.
And she's... So she doesn't just support you in the classroom, she supports you outside of the classroom. That's really important, too.
She lives it.
I just want to say to my seniors that I thank y'all and I'm going to miss y'all.
You gotta be more much, but yeah. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you.
And Mr. Stout, we definitely, I did give you the thumbs up, but we certainly want to thank you for seeing the potential in the teacher you placed there and for making that allocation available. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. McNeil said she'd been tutoring you on the side, and you're coming along really well too, Mr. Stout.
We would love to stay, but...
No, we understand.
That's the kind of stuff I like. Good job, Dylan.
Thank you, brother.
All right, Dylan. All right, Wesley.
Look coming there.
Okay, Wes.
That's great.
Aww. Hey, you went to Avid. My God, this is my niece.
Well, you ought to, you ought to know who your family is.
Well, I do, it's my great-great niece.
Who isn't your niece?
Aww.
She's so cute.
I didn't see, I just saw the back. I didn't see her face.
Bye-bye.
About as big as Sandy used to be when she was that age.
All right, Mr. Buckles. Certainly it's worth it, even if we had given them another 15 or 20 minutes, it's worth every bit of it. That's the business we're in.
Absolutely.
Okay, at this time, we will have our State of the District Superintendent by Superintendent Surrancey.
Ms. France, you going to help me out? You got it? Okay. Well, y'all can put your tissues away now. I'm back.
We're not going to be crying tears of joy.
I don't know. Yeah, tears of joy. There you go. There you go. And, uh, what a great group. And I actually went to an Avid conference this past week and, um, just to see across the nation how Avid is changing the landscape of different places, and it's amazing, I'll tell you. To see these kids, you know, we talk about product of Putnam, well, these are, these are kids that are going to come back and really impress us.
Make a difference.
Yep. So today's, um, the day that we do State of the District each year, just kind of a summary of all the great stuff going on. But before I do State of the District, I want to do Start of the District, talk about the start of the district. And, uh, I want you to look at that piece of paper up there, which I know you can't read, but that piece of paper is actually from this book, and this is the first set of Board Minutes in Putnam County. And, uh, Ms. Cormany pulled it out of the vault yesterday, and it's still in pretty good shape. This is 1888. First Board Minutes, and that's a copy of it. But the reason I bring that up is, um, this year, 2019, which you guys helped me research this, we talked about it down in Tampa, this year is the 150th anniversary of the Putnam County School District. And, uh, the document that we read, and I'll remind you, the State Superintendent of Schools at that time, uh, said, you know what? The Civil War just ended. We have a lot of people, a lot of poverty, you know, a lot of kids that are not in school. And he actually ordered the forming of the Putnam County School District because there are a lot of kids that needed opportunities to go to school and, you know, to get their life together. And, um, our kids today deserve that same opportunity, don't they? So, um, but I did a little research after that, and if you ever get a chance, go, go to the Putnam County Historical Society, and there's actually an online book, it's like 500 pages, and I just kind of scanned it to see how much of that dealt with the school district and found some different things that were interesting. But, um, anyway, we mentioned that, um, first superintendent in this county was Superintendent Snow. That was his name. He was appointed at that time. And, uh, on July 3rd, 1869, was the beginning of the Putnam County School District, and they had a five-member board. And, um, since, since, uh, I was trying to find the number of superintendents that had been in office since 1869, and there's actually a gap between 1869 and 1888 for some reason. Now, it might have been because of Reconstruction, who knows? I'm not sure why, but, but, um, in 1888, we started really counting, and I got with Mr. Overterf at the Supervisor of Elections. I said, hey, can you find a document that shows all the superintendents? And they actually were able to find a list of all the superintendents, and there were like two or three, three termers, of course, Mr. Buckles was one of them, but there was, and Mr. Thomas was a five-termer, and then we had some other, Mr. Barstow, I believe. Anyway, dating back to 1888, we've had, I'm the 15th superintendent since 1888.
It's not very many.
Not many. But, you know, there was a few of them before then, but we don't have that number yet.
And there were some interims and some gaps and stuff.
Right, right. And actually, the, um, they said that, uh, the Board Chair was actually an interim superintendent at one time during that period of time. But I thought it was kind of neat just to talk about that and how far we've come and bring that up to today. The kids back then needed an education just like the kids now, but the kids now, you know, their needs are different, a little more refined, if you will. College is in the forefront for a lot of these kids, has our, um, career opportunities for a lot of our kids. So what I want to do is just very quickly move through this presentation, and I'm going to ask if you have any questions, if you would make a note on your slide so we can come back to it. I want to kind of keep the pace going, and I'll ask members of our staff to come up after the presentation and ask and answer any specific questions that you have so we can kind of move fast. So, uh, starting with our mission statement, we will inspire every student to think, to learn, to achieve, to care, to become a successful and responsible citizen. Our strategic plan, which, as you know, the board created in 2014, the strategic plan, if you refer to the, um, Strategic Plan booklet that you have, we've refined that some, but let me, uh, just point out a couple of things. The strategic plan of the Putnam County School District is focused on cultivating a learning community where students are engaged in learning, where they strive for excellence, where they are supported to achieve. The district's goal is to maximize the learning of all students. There are four key pillars that serve to support this initiative. A focus on the growth and achievement of every student, providing a safe and caring learning environment, ensuring the effective, equitable, and efficient use of resources in developing and sustaining great teachers and leaders. Our progress towards improving these pillars is measured by performance targets and outcomes. The superintendent's strategic goals, which we have six of those, were developed through the input from school and community stakeholders, groups, and outline what we are striving to implement in service of our overall district goal to maximize the learning of all students. And again, if you look in there, we have those six goals, and you'll notice, uh, Mr. Hinky really worked on, you know, developing a draft of these that show the ones we have achieved, the ones we are, we will be achieving within the next two years, and then the third column are the ones that are long-term, ones that we'll be, we'll be working on, uh, beyond two years. So we have a plan, a phased plan, if you will, of achieving the goals. Let's look at Goal A. Says the district supports customized professional learning that ensures the cultivation of communities where all educators, students, and support personnel engage in meaningful learning, strive for excellence, and receive the support needed to continuously improve. This goal actually aligns with the two pillars, a safe and caring learning environment and a great, and great teachers and leaders. So you see, our goals are interweaved with the four pillars of the strategic plan. Next, Department of Teaching and Learning has transitioned to a professional learning model that is job embedded with ongoing support and actionable feedback. With input from principals, professional learning communities for the 1920 school year were determined based on data and school needs. All of you have been in education, you know, the old days, we did professional learning by just sitting and getting, get your points and move on. Now, we changed our whole attitude and, uh, strategies for professional development. It's more job embedded. The next one is, uh, our professional learning communities. This year, we were able to add a fifth-grade science community, a secondary text-based writing cohort, and a biology and marine science community to our already established 2018-19 communities. Benefit of these communities is that our teachers have been able to collaborate, plan, and learn from and with their peers from schools across the district. So our, our teachers get together on a regular basis and learn from one another. During these trends, during these sessions, teachers review data, deeply consider high-value standards in instructional practices, participate in model lessons both in simulations and in actual classrooms, and plan for upcoming units to study altogether. With this new model of sustained community professional learning comes support. When taking these plans and practices back to the classroom, teachers are supported and receive feedback from colleagues, novice teacher mentors, and coaches as they trial their new learning with students. During the first quarter alone, educators across our district receive upwards of 1,400 hours of individualized support. If you see, if you go back to the previous one, that's a log that we keep of the number of hours that our coaches and novice teacher mentors spend with our teachers. So we want to make sure that we're adequately covering our schools. We have some, we have seen some promising momentum and growth from this new sustained, focused, community model of professional learning. Highlight the drastic changes in writing. In 2017-18, we've had 100 elementary students score a zero or earn no score on the FSA writing portion of the ELA assessment. After putting a focus on this in, in our ELA communities, we saw a 71% reduction in that number, and we had similar results in the secondary schools. Our other communities had cause for great celebration, too. The Department of Teaching and Learning was also able to support some critical new curriculum resources this year. In kindergarten through second, we were able to secure and provide implementation support for a research-based, explicit, and systematic phonics program called Open Court Reading: Foundational Skills Kit. We're also proud to say that while the mathematics curriculum adoption process was postponed this past year because of the adoption of the new standards, we moved ahead with our educators' selection of the Ready Classroom Mathematics Curriculum in kindergarten through fifth grade. Again, our data and our educators, our educators demonstrated and shared a critical need, and we responded. Goal B of the superintendent's goals. The district provides a variety of choices for students in the areas of academic acceleration, career training, and enrichment programs. And this aligns with the pillars of growth and achievement of every student, and effective, equitable, and efficient use of resources. We're going to play a short video, which you may have... We're going to play a short video, which you may have seen, but this is an excerpt from a production made by STEM2Hub, and it focuses on Putnam County.
The strides being made in Putnam County, for example, are stunning. In a community that statistics say has the most public housing in the country, technology and the health of the STEM2Hub have transformed schools starting at the elementary level.
There are a lot of incredible things happening in Putnam County, and unless you live there or were part of the STEM Hub, you may not have been exposed to the challenges they have.
Putnam County is situated in a rural environment, and with that presents unique challenges.
Our children have just not had the same opportunities that a lot of students have had in the major population centers.
If I could think about a rural community that gives me great hope for what's possible, it's Putnam County.
We've had much success in Putnam County partnering with outside organizations such as the STEM2Hub to ensure that we keep abreast with advances in technology, advances in opportunities for our kids, and we ensure that our students have equal opportunities to those in other counties. Our goal at the elementary school is to foster creativity, foster curiosity, provide kids resources, provide them robotics, provide them drone experiences, provide them circuitry experiences, provide them opportunities to look at the various areas of science and have them experiment with those concepts.
And those basic skills, starting with the youngest learners, are going to empower them to be really good at the more advanced things by building and inventing and creating.
With those basic building blocks in elementary school, our students are prepared to be able to move to a multitude of opportunities in middle school and high school. Advanced coding, for example, becomes available where students can actually code for e-commerce, code websites. When we set the stage in elementary school for those students to have those basic competencies to move on.
They have some incredible leaders in Putnam County, too, that have been hungry for this. They have a real appetite to change their community, and, and they're accelerating the things in their community in ways that probably some never thought would happen.
Over the past three years, the growth of Putnam County's graduation rate as a percentage of kids graduating has had the largest gain in the entire state. And that's because they're engaging kids in STEM programs that are of high interest, and they see the value. They see the careers that they can go into if they stick it out and stay in school and come in every day and work hard.
It's hard to truly express the disparity between rural and urban environments, but it's real. It's real, and the STEM2Hub has allowed us to bring opportunities to our students we would have never been able to do on our own, and it's, it's been one that's been amazing. And I truly see where in the future our students are going to be in high-paying, high-wage, technology jobs of tomorrow, uh, as a result of our partnership with the STEM2Hub.
It would be easy for them to say, we don't have hope, and you see what they're doing in two or three years, and no one has an excuse. Now, we, we all have the opportunities, it's just do we have the appetite and, and the attitude to really take on the challenge?
You know, we haven't had these resources at our hands until just recently, and you're going to see the students of Putnam County really flourish, and, um, great days are ahead for Putnam County because of STEM opportunities. Pretty cool, huh?
Absolutely.
I don't know if you've seen that or not, but we've played that, and that's on our Facebook page, and you don't hear many people say, Putnam County is that old poor county, and they don't, their kids don't have anything and all that. We don't hear that anymore, do we? Because our kids, we go out and get a lot of grant funding for this, you know, it's just, if, and I'll just credit, um, our federal programs and, and many of our folks who go out there and find these grants. And, uh, if we didn't do that, these things would not be available to us, so I'm very proud of that. Through our, through initiatives and partnerships with organizations, STEM2Hub, LEGO Education, and WASE Education, Putnam County School District has three goals. Goal number one is increase professional development opportunities that focus on science, technology, engineering, and math, provide innovative training to all teachers. Goal number two, provide differentiated, active instruction to deliver STEM learning opportunities to promote student exploration of STEM through programs such as robotics, drones, aerospace technology, advanced manufacturing, coding, web design, cybersecurity, advanced computer sciences, cybersecurity, and augmented and virtual reality. Goal number three, build collaborative partnerships with area businesses to align STEM activities with workforce needs. Through these partnerships, initiatives, and a focus on students' futures, Putnam County School District provides learners of today with opportunities for a bright tomorrow. We're training these kids on jobs that don't even exist yet, and you can see up here, these are the different strands in each of the different grade levels and beyond that are, that are available to our kids. And you see a list of, on the left, this is all the training our teachers are receiving. And, uh, for example, NYSERT, the number, the third one down, we are actually looking to create a cybersecurity academy in our high schools. We're not there yet, we're trying to build that foundation through elementary and middle school, but, uh, NYSERT is providing free curriculum, free training for our teachers, and I'll tell you what, you can just imagine the need for cybersecurity in this day and time. So there's a big, there'll be a lot of jobs available for that. Uh, and just scan, scan down there, you probably recognize some of those, um, chief science officers in our schools to help spread the word about STEM education. We're actually going to take some of those chief science officers, these are students, ambassadors, if you will, we're taking those to Tallahassee, uh, to meet with some of the folks up there, I think in February. WASE Education, some of us went out and met Steve Wasniak, who is, uh, him and Steve Jobs helped create the personal computer, got to meet him, what a cool guy. And, um, so all that is, is what's going on now, and, you know, that's really changing the outlook of STEM in Putnam County. Let's go to our next one, the Putnam Sore Project. Through a federal program's distance learning grant, we have two classrooms in each of our four high schools, as well as Miller Middle School equipped with technology. St. John's River State College, our partner in this project, also has the technology in a classroom at each of their campuses. Current classes using the technology to span geographic areas include dual enrollment, Cambridge, and career and technical courses. We talked about this before, and there's actually a video on our Facebook page, which I encourage you to watch if you haven't. Ashley McCool's been the driving force behind this. But what a great opportunity to meet the needs of our kids, where we might have teacher shortages. One teacher in one high school can teach multiple classes through this technology. And actually, we just learned that Levy County, which is one of our partners with Nefec, also has this grant. And just imagine, we could actually partner with other school districts, where we could teach, one teacher in one district could teach, you know, more than one class across districts.
That's great.
And it's not as easy as saying it, you have to coordinate your schedules and all that, but, you know, the possibility is still there. Expansion of Career and Technical Education. Putnam County School District has been the recipient of a legislative appropriation in both 2018 and 19. With these appropriations, we have been able to offer additional CTE programs of study for our students in the areas of advanced manufacturing and a public service academy at each high school. And this expansion has increased the number of students enrolled and completing CTE programs, which results in additional FTE for the district. So the number, the more program completers we have, the more funding we receive. And I'm not sure if you read in the paper or not, and I, I'm not sure if we'll mention this later, but you saw on Saturday's paper where, and I sent you the article, but through our advanced manufacturing program, which we received an appropriation from the legislature, Put, um, Georgia Pacific, that was one of the decisive factors of them bringing that new paper machine to Palatka, and 600 and some odd million dollars. And, uh, just think about that, what that's going to do to our economy here. Very proud of that.
Rick, the key, one of the keys that you mentioned then is, has to do with inter-agency cooperation, and I'll say a little bit about that on closing remarks today, but I, you've done a remarkable job in, in collaborating with other agencies, so.
Well, and I, thank you for saying that, I think that we have to realize we can't do this alone. We can't be in our own silo, and it takes all of us working together. Expansion of Avid. Come on in, come on in. And while I've got the microphone, I want to introduce our mayor, which we all know, they're coming in, our new city manager, Bill Shanahan. Bill, wave at the crowd here.
Who, who is the mayor?
Betsy Drigger is our city clerk, so thank y'all for coming. And we're actually going to have something on your agenda today about, um, a little MOU involving the school district and the city. So, welcome, Bill.
Good to see the mayor, good supporter of all our athletic teams and kids.
Expansion of Avid, and we just talked about Avid, and you might recognize some of those pictures. Under the Florida Partnership, the Putnam County School District was able to expand Avid sites for the 2019-20 school year. We now have nine Avid school sites where administrators and teachers have been trained, and our newest site is at Miller Middle School. Goal C, the district provides all students the opportunity to create an individualized plan that supports on-time high school graduation and success meeting post-secondary goals. And this aligns with the pillars of the growth and achievement of every student and a safe and caring learning environment. These are the graphs I really love to talk about. That one I've shown a lot, shows that our district graduation rate has increased dramatically since 2015, from approximately 55% to 64% in the year 2016, to 72% in 2017, 85% last year in 2018. One goal of our district's graduation initiative is to exceed the state average. The 2019 graduation rate is projected to increase again as we aim to reach the 90% goal in 2020. So remember, this is a five-year plan, and what, once that number is released, possibly this week, we will, um, you know, bring you up to date on that. Next one, and again, the thing I'm most proud of is the fact we are reaching a lot of our subgroups. The one I just showed you was the overall one, this is one that has to do with, um, our, our white subgroup. Graduation rate for the white students increased 26.2 percentage points over the last four years. See, it's approaching the state average. The next one is our Black and African-American. The school district is striving to close the graduation rate gap with our Black, African-American students. The graduation rate for this group of students was within 1% of the state average and within 5% of our district rate in 2018. So a lot of these folks that, um, you know, all these groups with JFG, which I'll talk about in a minute, we try to reach all these subgroups through our initiatives. This is our Hispanic subgroup. The graduation, graduation rate for these students exceeded the state average in 2018. So we've gone above the state average. And the next one is students with disabilities. Increased 40.8 percentage points over that same period. Here's jobs for Florida graduates. A team of leaders, teachers, and students from Putnam County Schools were recognized at the Jobs for American Graduates National Conference in Orlando, Florida. Because of the success of our JFG program is having at supporting students to graduate on time, the Jobs for Florida Graduates Grant has expanded into our middle schools in an effort to help students get on track before they transition from eighth grade to high school. So JFG has done a tremendous job in helping to level the playing field. Goal D says the district regularly meets with stakeholders to gather input, address concerns, and strengthen partnerships to improve the quality of education in life in Putnam County. And this aligns with our pillars of a safe and caring learning environment and effective, equitable, and efficient use of resources. And there's just a list that you can refer to, all the ways that we reach out and try to partner with, um, our stakeholders within the district. As a matter of fact, tomorrow morning, we have a PIDEC meeting, which is our meeting with parents. We've already had a superintendent's advisory meeting here, here in this, uh, room. Uh, you know, the Inside Putnam videos, which I'll talk about later, informing, uh, everyone of what's going on with some of our initiatives. Product to Putnam, which we'll again be doing later this year. And, um, you know, the We Are Putnam video has been a real big success. And here's a, you see up there some clips from that video. That really tells the story of what's going on in our county. The next one has to do with, um, our schooling security system. A number of positive school safety measures have been implemented, including bleed control campaigns, lockdown drills, behavior threat assessment teams, and an updated Raptor system. In addition to these target hardening efforts, additional efforts focused on facilities and technological upgrades are also being considered. We feel very confident in the safety and security of our students, school facilities, and transportation due to these improvements. Goal E has to do with the district supports school principals with guidance and defined autonomy to problem-solve and make decisions that ensure schools meet district improvement goals. This aligns with the pillars of the growth and achievement of every student and great teachers and leaders. Under this, a culture of high expectations for school performance is leading to a decrease in the number of schools identified for improvement by the Florida Department of Education. In 2016-17, our district had nine schools with a grade of D or F, and this, and this year, we had two. Additionally, the 2019-20 school year is the first year we do not have any traditional high schools on the state's school improvement list because the graduation rates were below 67%. For the first time in almost a decade, the Putnam County School District does not have any traditional public schools implementing a state-approved turnaround plan. In 2018-19, there were two schools, Brining Pierce and Mosley Elementary, that were implementing state board of education-approved plans. Both schools earned a C school grade in 2019, and schools exited turnaround status once they improved to a school grade of C or higher. So I'm very proud of that. We have no longer any schools in turnaround. Next page, principals, if you look at the data, our data chats that we have quarterly, principals work with area directors on presentations for district staff and peers during key times of the year. Presentations include data analysis, school-level projections, and early warning systems and ESC monitoring. Provide opportunities to learn from and collaborate with colleagues, and allows the district to make adjustments to staff support and professional learning as needed.
That is so critical.
That's been a real important thing, we bring our principals together and just digging into the data. And, you know, the sharing amongst, among our principals has been really important. Because, you know, they've been kind of in their own world, but you bring them together, and there's a lot of sharing going on. The district has partnered with the K-12 Lift to provide visualized data to support school leadership and teachers in reviewing data to make changes in instruction so that students can succeed. And those data visualizations are phenomenal, it really gives us an idea, especially historically, seeing where those groups are going. Look at Goal L, this is our last goal. It says the district will recruit, develop, and retain talented employees. This aligns with pillars of effective, equitable, and efficient use of resources and great teachers and leaders. This is one that Ms. Odom, the next slide, this is one Ms. Odom loves to show, and we all do. We continue to find ways to increase our unreserved fund balance in the general fund, while at the same time setting aside funds to meet expanded district initiatives. So you see, uh, since 2000, since the recession, we took a downturn, and in the last three years, we're starting to tick back up again. And, uh, hopefully, I don't know if, uh, show, if you saw, but we actually published two graphs side by side that showed, um, well, not only our fund balance, but it showed, uh, our graduation rate, and it showed how it compared to housing starts in Putnam County. And everything is take, is trending upward, so we're at a good point in time right now, and we want to keep that success moving.
We even received some mention from, I think, the board of realtors, uh, about what's happened in the turnaround that's been made.
Right.
But it's people like Aaron McNeil and, and those that are getting the help and the training they need from Ms. Huff and, and instructional staff is making a huge difference.
Yeah, it's, it's something to really be proud of, and we definitely want to keep it going. Employee morale. This year, the district school board members approved, that would be y'all, approved a contract ratification allowing district- be y'all, approved a contract ratification allowing district pay raises to go into effect June the 4th, 2019. And you recall, a 1% pay raise was given retro to July 1st of 2018, and a 2% pay raise across the board went into effect July the 1st, 2019, for the 2019-20 school year. So, the raise is a great way to attract more employees to this area, as well as recognize the efforts of our current employees. Implementing pay raises costs an estimated total of $2.6 million, and is part of our district budget for the 2020 school year. This year, the district also recognized employees, thanks to you guys, with 20-plus years of service to the school district. That cost absolutely nothing, and I tell you, the mileage we got out of that and the good feelings was immeasurable. I did not realize the impact that had. So, kudos to all of you for doing that. Supporting hiring and onboarding process. Having group sessions in the summer allows for more efficient onboarding so that we can ensure our new employees are ready to start on day one. And Ms. Whitehurst and her staff does a great job in really having those teacher academies and really orienting them before the school starts. Our novice teacher mentor program, which we talked about before, and New Teacher Institute. The purpose of the novice teacher mentor program is to recruit and retain teachers in Putnam County, provide teacher support in both classroom management and instructional design and delivery, and to ultimately increase student achievement. And here's a quote. It says, "One of the most important and overlooked aspects of education is having mentors who help you manage the grind of daily struggles and the challenges of the profession." And that's from Edutopia. And that has been a great recruiting tool, more so than just money in a lot of cases. If teachers know that they can come here and get that level of support in the classroom, that's a wonderful recruiting tool. National exposure. During the summer of 2019, Mosley leaders, teachers, and students presented at the LSI, it's Learning Sciences International, Building Expertise National Conference down in Orlando. They continue to be recognized for their strong implementation of student-academic teaming. Along with Mosley's conference breakout sessions, the students, teachers, and leaders are featured in videos during the keynote presentations at the conference. All the video clips showcasing Mosley Elementary are posted on the LSI's YouTube channel. And you should have a copy of this document, From F School to a Place Where All Students Thrive. And that's a real glossy book showing our wonderful students at Mosley, and just a description of what's happened there. And if you haven't been there, that is truly a place to visit. The LSI Applied Research Center recently published a case study of Mosley Elementary as one of their Hall of Fame model schools. The school has hosted visitors from across Florida, and will welcome school leaders from Nebraska in January.
Wow.
The publication of Mosley Elementary, From F School to a Place Where All Students Thrive showcases our district's belief that all students can learn. Thank y'all for coming. The teacher retention rate at Mosley is evidence that effective leadership and a school culture built upon teacher empowerment and student ownership can create a recipe for recruitment and retention. And at this time, I'm gonna ask our leadership team, who are here today, some of them are out of town, but if y'all would just come up and be prepared to answer some questions from our board, and I want to talk about, as they're coming up here, talk about some of the challenges moving forward that we will be looking at this year and beyond. We're gonna continue the LSI work, sending all school administrators to a summer conference this summer to be trained on the instructional strategies with LSI, continue supporting novice teachers with district mentors, continue to expand acceleration and CTE programs district-wide, continue to expand our STEM programs in our high schools, look at creative ways to continue to build our fund balance, and respond to changes in legislation as we get ready for this legislative session. Hopefully, it's gonna be a good session, but we have to deal with what the hand has dealt to us, right?
That's amazing.
And our last slide, that is actually, the 2090 is our 2020 goal, and you see where we've come from, 54.9. And that is a picture of our billboard that we're gonna be putting on Highway 20, just to show our progress in improving our graduation rate.
Excellent.
And I want to thank you for your time. And with that, I'll, we'll entertain any questions you have about our presentation today.
Who's that young man in that?
I don't know. They had to do some, had to do some airbrush work on him.
I won't say what you said at the conference.
The only problem that worries me is the legislative session. I pray the governor doesn't try to come up with some plan to change the focus of what districts are doing to bring up what we know we need to do in Putnam County, because if they come up with some other standard scale, then it throws you right back at the bottom of the list. And, you know, it's okay to have goals, but you don't, nobody, if they keep moving the goalpost every time you reach it, it gets ridiculous. But you know that, and I know that, I just can't, I can't say how much to the instructional team, how much it means to us to know that these kids like that we're up here today and throughout the district are being served like they're being served.
As you know, the governor is, January 1st will be presented the standards review. Don't know if you have any information on that, but, you know, they've been doing the, you know, the solicitation across the state about how, what people want to see. So, the Department of Education will be presenting this standard review to the governor January 1st. So, we'll stay tuned to see what changes are being implemented.
He's a sharp guy. I hope he relies on his educators.
Well, and I think teacher funding is one of his major initiatives this term. So, you know, we're supporting that. And it may not be what he proposes, but at least I think it's a step in the right direction.
Right.
So, our staff is here. I know Ms. Odom is out of town, and Kim is here to answer any financial questions. And I would urge you to ask her a question, just to make sure.
What's in your wallet?
I remember when I called on her in class. Not going to do that to you.
Ms. Odom is not available today, and Dr. Coleman is out of town. And I think that's, so we have our other staff here. If you have any questions about anything that we presented, I would urge you to.
I don't have any questions. I just think, you know, it's just, every time I see it and hear it, it's just that much more exciting. And, you know, thank you so much for all of you, the leadership that you've shown, and the support of the superintendent and his goals. I just am so excited about the future for Putnam County.
Well, I was fortunate enough to get to talk to Rick briefly before the board meeting. And I was telling him, looking at other local government and entities that, you know, around us and here in Putnam County, you can find bad or things that aren't as good in any organization, if you want to look for stuff that is not going well. But when you look at the goals and what you're trying to approve, what you're trying to get accomplished, we've got so many good things going on, and you need to focus on that, and then the other things we try to bring along as we can. So, it's just, you know, there's always gonna be somebody that says, "Well, you're not doing this and that." But for the majority of the kids, it's a life mission. Those kids up here are gonna be successful.
I read a quote the other day that said, "Once you think you're great, then that's the beginning of going back to mediocrity."
That's right.
So, we're continuing to try to get better every day, and we realize we have a long ways to go, but I think we can celebrate some of the things that we have there.
Yeah, I'm right.
Say, "When you're green, you're growing. When you're ripe, you rot."
Right.
So, we are going.
Is that in the Bible?
No.
That's the Book of Gil.
You think that was in the garden?
That's the Book of Gil Yard, yeah.
Well, I just want to call our staff up here. We meet every Monday morning, and we actually use as our, our agenda, those six goals. And everything is built around those six goals. So, we continue to talk about that. We talk with Justin currently, because Felicia's on maternity leave, but we talk about district messaging every Monday morning. And because we want to make sure we're really.
Sending out the good stuff.
We're sending out the good stuff and the true stuff. We want to make sure that people know what's going on. And if we don't tell our story, somebody else will.
And they may not get it right.
So, we want to make sure we continue sending that out. And I think, you know, we will continue to get better at doing that. But once again, we want to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about the start of the district and the state of the district. And again, if you have any questions at all, now or later, our staff is here. And I'll tell you, we couldn't have a better staff. I cannot have a better staff around me. And I just do a lot of asking questions, and they do all the answers. So, I'm very fortunate.
Very good people.
So, I want to give our staff a round of applause for all the work they do. Any other questions?
I do have a question. On slide, well, on page 11 of the Department of Teaching and Learning, not all schools are listed there. Is that because they didn't, it's got a biology learning community? It's page 11.
These are the two communities, these are the comparisons from the communities we had before. We had, we started teaching and learning last year.
Okay.
So, it's the first time that we had an entire department that, that's General Rivera's department, that is really, truly trying to promote professional development and learning with all of our stakeholders. And so, the first year, that 17-18 data was the year before we had a teaching and learning department.
Okay.
Then we based our PD on what principals and data said we needed to do. And that comparison for 18-19 was the change. And then this next year, you'll see where we've started new communities, and you would hope to see that trend continue. But we won't get that data till the summer.
So, does that mean, like, under Math- Methodology, we don't use that at Crescent City High School?
Correct. It was part of a grant that these schools were able to participate in. Now, when they come together, if you, that was last year, this year, Algebra I, they all come together at the same time. So, we're still using Sarah Schaefer's company, Methodology, and all algebra teachers are invited throughout the district. So, this was the first year, and we were able to pay for that through a grant.
You can bet their butting their heads together, trying to figure out how to do the rest of the school the same way.
Okay. Any other questions?
Go ahead, and I'll add one.
I did have another question. I think you said we had a public service academy at all three high schools?
Mm-hmm.
And that's going?
Yes.
Okay.
At the south and west ends of the county, it's criminal justice, whereas the central area is more through the EMT rescue line. But they all have public service academy.
So, if we had a student at either Crescent City High School or Interlocken High School who really wants to be involved in the EMT Public Service Academy, how would we accommodate that?
They probably would instead need to go through the health, the Health Science Academy. And we partnered this year with St. John's River State College, and Renee could come up and speak to this. But we've partnered with St. John's River State College this year that we've got, I think, what, how many students?
I have five in the EMT.
Five students from out, throughout the district who will be participating in EMT. They'll be training as an EMT at St. John's this second semester.
The real goal would be to try to, try to offer, if you had the program at one school, you could do it like Superintendent was speaking earlier about the STEM. One teacher at one school can teach kids at another school. And we're getting to that point. And we've known for 15 years that that's a way to go, but at some point, we, I think it would be a desirable, I guess Ms. Crawford's not listening.
I didn't know you were talking.
I was talking, I was trying to answer that question about how, I'm sure they're trying to find a way to serve those kids and.
One of the classes that we do have serving Palaca High School and Interlocken High School is Principals of Public Service. It's the first core class. And so, that's using the Distance Learning Lab.
Well, that's what we were saying. Could you use that?
So, it actually is, it's four periods a day, and Willburg Bauer, the teacher, alternates between which school he'll be at. So, he actually does do a face-to-face touchdown with the kids each week. So, he spends a couple of days at Palaca High School, and then transitions to IHS and delivers the instruction both ways.
You know, and just like we mentioned, it's much more of a burden for the kids in Crescent City, because they can't just, you know, they could come from Interlocken to Palaca High, if that's the only place that was taught. But, you know, I just want to make sure that all of our kids have the same, you know, are close to the same opportunities.
We all do.
And I think that's what you're working for.
Well, let me mention too, I was gonna mention this in my comments later, but we have released today, is it on the Facebook? Yeah, on the Facebook, we've released our latest Inside Putnam video on Cambridge in Crescent City.
Great.
And you're gonna see some, it's about a four-and-a-half-minute video, but it talks about the opportunities the kids in South Putnam have, because as you know, in the past, we've had to transport them to QI.
Absolutely.
Now, that's a thriving program in Crescent City.
Yeah.
That's wonderful to hear.
And we are actually interviewing some of those students and the teachers, and, you know, it's phenomenal. So, it's gonna be a great tool to show as we recruit more kids for Cambridge.
But I just have to applaud instructional team, because it's, it is finally getting to the point that we're going to be able to offer through technology, the best and brightest teachers to teach some of the most.
Right.
Needful children.
And maybe not teachers that have gone through a typical teaching program like we did. I mean, from all areas of technology.
Well, we're spending, we have spent a considerable amount of money, as you know, with Learning Sciences International.
Oh, yeah.
In helping to turn around Mosley. But that is money that we've invested, because, and Laura can speak to this more, but we have actually, we're using those strategies and those instructional strategies, and now we're gonna expand that district wide.
Throughout the.
And we're training all of our principals this summer, which I mentioned earlier.
Yeah, I was excited about that.
Yeah. And we're seeing the success of that. And why not expand that when you have success?
You and your staff are to be commended for helping the teachers.
Well, I want to thank you guys for all your support, and we couldn't do it without you. So, it's a partnership. Thanks to all of you.
In my devotional reading this morning, one of the writers referred to kind of education that I see happening in Putnam County, is that it's sort of like the cafeteria. All of our children can go through and pick what they want and leave what they don't want. We now have pretty much something for every kid to choose from off that line, and it's awesome. It's a great day to be.
There is no reason that we can't find a way to serve kids in this day and time.
Your zip code should not define what your opportunities are.
That's right.
You need to be able to have, we should have what the kids in Los Angeles, New York, whatever, the same things they have. And I believe we do. So, I'm very proud of that. Yep. Thank you for your attention. I know it went long, but thank you.
And again, to that leadership team, we thank you, and we appreciate you all keeping our superintendent on course.
Those are, those minutes are so interesting.
Okay, we have no more, no other presentations. At this time, we are prepared for our public comments. We have first, a general comment on the subject, "One-sided Treatment of Evolution in the High School Biology Book" by Mr. Jay Shutt. If you will come up and introduce yourself and give us your address.
Okay. Jay Shutt, 1488 State Road 20, Interlocken. And before I begin, I'd just like to say, I wish every parent in Putnam County could have seen what I've seen so far this evening. And Superintendent Serency, board members, teachers, staff that are here, you need to be proud to be part of this school district. I know I would, would be. And I'm a retired teacher, 40 years of experience. But it was very impressive.
Thank you.
And I have no doubt you're gonna reach that goal.
Thank you.
The first time I spoke to the board, I contended that the chapter on evolution in the biology book was completely one-sided and left the student feeling that bacteria-to-man evolution had been scientifically proven true. For the Christmas holiday, I'm asking you, board members, to do a homework assignment and watch three YouTube videos and read the chapter on evolution in the biology book. The total time investment, I figure, is about three hours. I'm making my request at this time, because it should be easy to get a hold of a textbook over the holiday season. The YouTube videos present a load of empirical documented scientific evidence that the Earth and the universe are young, and that the mathematical probability of evolution in the Big Bang is statistically zero. The biology. is statistically zero. The biology book's chapter on evolution is of utmost importance because it calls the truth of the Bible into question. The Book of Genesis states that creation took six literal days. The Hebrew word for day is yam. Yam, when it's preceded by a cardinal or ordinal number, 1, 2, 3, first, second, third, always refers to a 24-hour period. The Bible states that we humans were made in the image of God, not from the evolution of a bacteria cell. If the chapter on evolution in our biology book is true, then the Bible's not true. It means that life is one big gambling hall and has no lasting meaning. Everything happens by chance. It means there's no absolute truth. The only law is might makes right. And it's no wonder that many of our youth find no meaning in life and commit or attempt suicide. Now, I'm not asking the board to decide if the biology book's chapter on evolution is true or untrue. I'm asking the board to decide after viewing the videos and reading the chapter, if the presentation is one-sided or not. If the board does find the chapter on evolution one-sided, I propose that the board contact state and federal lawmakers and the State Board of Education. And I'm including our representatives in DC because every single secondary and post-secondary biology textbook or any science book on evolution presents bacteria-to-man evolution in the same one-sided manner. In your correspondence, I had a request that you'd ask them to view these three videos and confirm the fact that all public education science texts treat these theories as established scientific facts. This is dishonest scholarship and potentially harmful to our students. Every aware patriotic American needs to speak out on this matter in our own way. However, you Putnam County board members are in a position to have your voices heard much more loudly than the average citizen because of your position. And I pray you would decide to speak up on this vital issue. The three YouTube videos and the contact information are on these two pages, which I'll have passed out. And I thank you very much.
Jay, could I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Where did you teach school?
I taught for years in Michigan and then North Carolina for 15 years, 35, or 25 years in Michigan and then.
Just to give you a little one-sided thought on this, is the state of Florida has, they have an approved curriculum or approved set of books that they will allow boards to, you know, districts to choose from. So, you kind of, you have to follow the law. I mean, it doesn't mean that you can't have your own view and it hasn't been taught in the classroom about creationism and different. I got in an argument, not in an argument, but I tried to explain a certain portions of the Bible to someone who was going on about this the other day. And the short term is, if you'll notice, the superintendent and the board still allow the term "In God We Trust" to be posted on many of our schools. And it's been in stationary before. And it's, but, but that terminology has been rendered as, in a Supreme Court, as being secular in nature and not, not secular in nature, but it's not about religious, secular, excuse me, I got it backwards. But, I was trained in that years ago and how to, how to offer religious freedom to kids in school, what's legal and what isn't. And I'm sure that Superintendent will take what you said and the board will under advisement. But, you know, we're going, we'll pass it on to our legislators and all. But, now they're fixing to come out with a curriculum, demand, going back to civics and US government, which they should do anyway. I mean, I taught Americanism versus Communism in the beginning, but depends on how they're going to force it and what comes. It all starts at a state level. And it will be some political hopeful at a state level that'll start that. And it will, I mean, we can have our own strong opinions, but we appreciate you coming in and sharing your views with us. Thank you.
And this was in chapter what?
I think it's chapter 11. I'm not sure.
Chapter 11.
That's, that's, you know, from my, I've read this a couple of years ago. And so, I'm, don't hold me to that. But, it's listed under.
And it's in the biology book.
Evolution. I'm a, I'm a big, I'm a big Indian fan of artifacts and things like that. Growing up, I enjoyed it. And I've been looking at skeletons of giants and things like that. But, you know, the Bible refers to giants in preexistence. So, you know, it's, there's a lot of, as far as I know, our teachers still probably teach both ways because high school students and middle school students are gonna ask questions that you couldn't think of. So, there's a lot of discussion, I'm sure, comes up. And I see Mark Myrtle grinning back there. So.
When most teachers are being trained in colleges and universities, that evolution has been proven.
Well, I got you. I understand. It's a theory. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shutt.
I'm watching.
Okay, our next speaker, general comment on the subject of "After the Fact." And this is on Agenda Item H3. And it deals with requests to pay tutors out of Title I funds. Mrs. Osborne, if you will come, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairperson, board members, Dr. Searcy. It's, and fighting and to see how interesting the school district is developing. And it's also a sad time for me because I retired and I do miss all of the students. But, there's time to retire and enjoy life as you get older. I noticed on the agenda, and this is the reason that I came forth today, is there are three items on "After the Fact" from the Federal Programs Director, Melissa Coleman. And the one particular one I wanted some answers on had to do with after the fact of approving tutors in the 2018-19 school year. What purpose does this serve? And would it change the outcome? Because the teachers have already worked, the paraprofessionals have already worked, the money's been spent. So, just a clarification as to why it's being approved a year later?
H3.
H3.
H3. It's dated December the 17th, I think. Put my glasses, no, dated, I'm sorry. It's dated November the 25th. And it has to do with requests for paying tutors out of the Title I funds for the 2018-19 school year. That's over and done with and forgotten. So, is there a particular reason as to why this request was submitted?
I would, I would imagine we approved it because it was an after-the-fact request. I just.
Well, I understand the after the request, but it's, but it's a year ago.
Charity, we have.
Melissa, if you haven't approved it, it's on the agenda till today. But, Dr. Coleman is not here. She's at the EPTAC meeting.
Yeah.
If you'd like to, you can table it for next time.
Yes. I think that would be the logical thing to do simply because Mrs. Coleman isn't here, well, Dr. Coleman isn't here to, to explain that one. So, do we need a motion to table it in a second?
Do we want to wait till?
Well, we could just pull it and then table it.
Excuse me. If it's after the fact.
Well, four.
And somebody owes the money, I think we have an obligation to, and I'm not trying to argue.
Who are these people?
Yeah, I just don't know if they've already done the work and they're waiting on money that they've, for work they've done.
Why would we have not?
Actually, I don't see where it says after the fact on it.
It doesn't say after the fact, but it is after the fact because this item was, these, these people were paid in 2018-19 school year. And now, you're just asking for approval this year. So, it is after the fact. May not say it on the, on the board agenda, but it is after the fact.
Okay.
I would just say she's not here. It does not say after the fact on the piece of paper. So, I would just say.
But, if it's 2018-19.
Rick, you gotta, you have a recommendation on that? I mean.
I would just recommend that we, when we get to that point in the agenda, we can table it and then we can.
Yes.
Let Dr. Coleman come back.
Because very easily, it could be just a date. It could be the wrong year put there.
I want you to have all the information before you vote on it.
So, rather than to address.
I want to pull.
I got you. I just didn't know if somebody had done the work and they're waiting to make a payment or something, you know.
Well, it's asking for teachers and paraprofessionals. And I doubt any teachers or paraprofessionals is gonna work for a year and not get paid personally. So.
And that's why I'm thinking it's probably something to do with the date. That's, that's the only logical answer I could have. It very easily could have been just the wrong date put on there. It could have been 1920.
Your concern is it's coming out of federal.
Not necessarily. It's just coming out of federal monies. It's just the fact that it's a request that is all a year old. So, why is it being presented to the board?
To hear from Dr. Coleman. Nobody, nobody knows.
That's the, that's the logical thing to do.
We can put it on the next board agenda.
Yes. Okay.
All right.
You have a concern?
Well, I just had, it was the, the request on, on item four is also after the fact in this because the.
Which four? Same?
H4. The teachers and tutors have already started working, I'm assuming. But, and I'm assuming they're getting paid. It's just was never presented to the board for approval to, to pay these, these people.
If they were to be paid, we would probably, and I'm looking at finance, I guess we would, we would probably pay it and be reimbursed from federal funds if, if this was something that is being held up. But, I.
They have to have board approval.
This is okay.
Additional hours.
For the normal working.
Most likely, we would hold those times if they didn't have board approval for them to work with additional hours.
That's probably what it is. Do you think they've already worked those hours?
I can't necessarily speak to it, but I'm not sure if there's times sheets are already attached to it.
We could table it and have Ms. France call Dr. Coleman.
Well, that item has to do with the 19-20 school year.
Yes. And, and it's right here.
We'll just table it until Melissa gets here.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Don't you think that's the best thing to do, board?
I just, I just want to know if somebody.
Then we can get all the information we need when she's here.
I just making sure that somebody haven't, hasn't already done some work and need to be paid.
She's normally here and can answer this, but she's out of the conference.
That's understandable. We'll do it next time.
And we're looking at three and four. So, we thank you for bringing.
But, I don't see where H4.
Four seems in line to me.
Yeah, I don't see where it's asking for after the fact, asking to pay people this year.
That are working now. Maybe they haven't started working yet and they're gonna work.
Well, that's a question. Have they started? Or have they, have they been working? Or are they just getting started?
So, we'll, rather than to, to be labeling.
The text of the letter says, "These teachers and paraprofessionals will sue."
Okay, so they haven't started yet.
Will means future. Okay. Yes.
So, we're not pulling.
All right.
But, you're welcome to have the paper.
No, I don't see any reason to table four. If it says will. Okay, is there anything else?
That's it. That's my concerns.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have that, taking that as Mr. Buckles would say, "Undetted by his men." And we appreciate it. Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that if the board members have nothing else they feel they need to pull.
I have a lot of stuff I want.
Well, I thought, I thought we were going.
No, no, we haven't, no, this stemmed from the comment. We haven't moved to the consent agenda yet.
All right.
Okay, we're now ready for the consent agenda. And you're popping. You're popping.
Public hearing.
Oh, we skipped that one. Okay. All right. Public hearing, item number one, adoption of new policy, number 5330.04, medical marijuana.
Madam, Madam Chair, I make a motion. We adopt the new policy because I know it is congruent with state law and through our NEOLAs updates.
And actually, that, that was one, and you can clarify that, that was, NEOLA would not provide us guidance on that. And Board Counsel is here if you need any explanation on that.
I read it. I read it. And I attended one of the in-service trainings in Tampa regarding it. Because federal supersedes state any day if it deals with the employees and et cetera. So, I'm. I'll second that motion.
All right, it's, and then we'll call for discussion. It's been properly moved by Mr. Buckles that we adopt the new policy, number 5330.04, medical marijuana. And second by Mrs. Jane Crawford. Any further discussion?
My only concern is that Mr. Buckles did mention NEOLA and it's not a NEOLA.
Well, it's, if, if, if the superintendent, the superintendent by law serves as the secretary to the school board. If it's on this agenda, it is being recommended by the secretary to the school board, who is a superintendent. And if I have questions, I feel good when he said, what he said about Lex and the Douglas Law Firm has affirmed that this is okay and this is congruent with law. So, that's, that's why, that's why when Ms. Osborne came up a while ago, if it's recommended by the superintendent, when he said, "Just table it," I'm good with that. So.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers? Hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. We're now ready for our consent agenda. We're gonna start with Mrs. Crawford and move to her left.
Okay. I would like to pull F2, G3.
Hold on, hold on. F2?
F2, G3, H3 that we've discussed, and J1.
So, that was H3 and not H4? That's correct?
No. She's pulling F2, G3, H3, and J1.
J1.
All right. Mr. McKinnis?
There's nothing else.
Okay. I am going to pull J1, which Mrs. Crawford has pulled as well, and F5.
I have nothing to pull.
I'm pulling F5. Okay.
Got everything covered.
All right. Mr. Buckles has none. All right. Mrs. Pickens?
No, I had three of the ones that had already been selected.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Can we get a motion to approve the other part?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus F2, 5, G3, H3, and J1.
Yes.
And I hope that covered them all?
Yes, so you're down. I went with you.
Second.
All right. It's been motioned by Mr. Buckles that we approve the consent agenda minus items F2, F5, G3, H3, J1. And it was seconded by Mr. Bud McKinnis. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. We are now ready. Mrs. Crawford?
I have asked the board attorney, Lex, to please explain the situation with our district policy and the, and PEN of Florida that I had never heard of before.
At least you know who NEOLA is now.
All right. Yeah. There's a mic. Okay. The PEN is a smaller teachers' union in the state of Florida. They, they qualify as a PTA or Professional Teacher Association in the state of Florida. They have qualified in several counties, including Duval County in Florida. And I have produced a copy of Florida statute 1,001.03. Subsection 4 is highlighted for everyone here. And they, PEN has requested that we follow this Florida statute and allow them to have automatic deductions. The Florida statute trumps our current standard that says there has to be 25 people to have an automatic deduction. If they were to sue us, they could get declaratory action and then also get their attorney's fees paid. I have spoken with Rhonda Odom and she says that the accommodation can be made. And so, at this time, we think that it would be our advice that we pass that and allow for that deduction. They had to make two specific. They had to make, uh, two specific, uh, written, uh, offers to the, the, to Putnam County School District, uh, that they would, um, pay for, um, some training, teacher training and staff development. And so those offers are there, it's also our recommendation that the, uh, uh, school board look into, uh, taking them up on that and getting your dollars back.
But what teacher training and staff development in what?
And that's, it's part of the vagary of the statute.
You recall that?
Unfortunately can't give you much, uh, to the, uh, uh, why they wrote the statute the way they did or why they gave that, but I do know that, um, at, at this point, that is the law and, and we should probably enforce it by just making the offer, even if it's, uh, not a very good one, uh, they comply with the statute.
So, PEN offered the teacher training and the staff development, or the statute says they have to?
No, PEN, in order to qualify under this statute, PEN has to do that. They had not done that till earlier this year.
Even if we don't want it?
Even if you don't want it, once they offer it, they have complied with the statute.
And to answer your question, uh, Ms. Whitehurst should come up and talk about the training they're gonna offer, I know, I know we've discussed it, but she can clarify that for you.
Um, so this has actually been going on since the New Teacher Institute. They reached out and offered to be a sponsor for one of our meals, and they would just talk to our new teachers just about some opportunities that they have that they can offer to teachers. So, we're just looking for sponsors, we're looking for free meals, I mean, you know, so-
So, we took them up on it?
We took them up, they brought in breakfast, and we allowed them to speak for a few minutes. They have training that they can offer to us, we do not have to take it. It is part of their, their association that they have different PD that they can offer. We, we are not obligated in any manner, but we did have seven teachers that made, um, an indication that they would be interested in being a part of their association.
And they are, who, what they do?
They have, they have not yet, um, because there's not any payroll deduction, and that's what this is, this is what they're trying to seek.
Right, yeah.
Of the seven at this point, I believe only one is still interested in being a part of that association.
Let me ask Mark a question, Jane, if you don't mind, Mark.
And that's really as much as-
Is this a-
As I know.
This is, is this a group trying to form in lieu of FEA? I mean, which is not uncommon, I mean, we have another school board association that I was interested in a few years ago because it was a lot less money than the current one, but nobody else seemed to be interested in it.
Yeah, uh, I, I will, under legal advice from FEA, I will limit my comments to, uh-
Fact.
Well, I mean, we probably have no choice but to-
PEN is not a labor organization, uh, they do not meet the requirements, uh, in Florida statute to, uh, uh, to participate in these activities like that. They, the, they claim to meet the requirements of the Professional Teacher Association statute, uh, and there are certain requirements, as Lex has mentioned, there are certain requirements they have to meet, certain thresholds they have to meet in order to be under that, uh, I believe in the legal back and forth, the doc, uh, conversations, uh, they are primarily relying on a twenty-year-old document from, um, I forget who that document is even from, uh, that-
I think Department of Education.
That basically states that PEN qualifies under the statute, so, um-
Well, that goes back twenty years ago when they were trying to create, uh, they're trying to divide organizations like collective bargaining groups and, and stuff like the School Board Association or, or the Teachers Association.
Neither confirm nor deny that's their goal here, David.
But I mean, I, I've seen, I, I know what it, what it really, it appears to me to be, so.
So, very simple. These people that are interested, the seven which is now one, that person can pay their own money, but we just, as a district, will not deduct it from their payroll. Am I correct? Cause it's their money to do as they choose.
There are other avenues for them to pay, to pay their membership fees.
It sounds like they sue us if we didn't do this.
Well, Miss, our attorney advises us to, it is not gonna hurt to do what he advised, it's, I don't think you're gonna have a mass exodus to PEN, so, I mean, and if you do, you just do, that's just the way it goes.
And so, legal advisement is, because of the way that it is written, even though there are some discrepancies, whatever, so that we do not, uh, have a lawsuit down the road or anything of that nature, just go ahead and approve it, and we're talking one, and that one, by the time they hear it, may not, maybe zero, so.
I, I would ask that any further requests made by PEN, that we have conversation about that before any other requests by PEN are approved, because, uh, it's, it's my feeling that they will make other requests that, uh, might not be guaranteed by statute, uh, or that they might not meet the thresholds for.
And, and let me assure you, I, I wanted to correct the, the error that I made earlier, they're not a teach, a teacher union, I would not recommend this board, recognize them as such, um, but, uh, for this narrow thing, I think they do qualify for the statute and there's a-
I'm just trying to figure out what it is they want to do with our people.
They want them to join their organization.
And they're saying, deduct it through our payroll and they will provide, I'm assuming, certain training here, there, and you might get a discount on going to it, et cetera.
And that's up to, that's up to the people that have the opportunity to do that.
Is this like joining the Council of English Teachers or the Council of Science Teachers?
You know, I'm not, a little different, I'm not really, it's maybe a little different. Would Ms. Crawford have to make the motion since she pulled it?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
We're ready.
Well, what if I'm all ready, do I still make the motion?
You can make a motion.
Here's what I would encourage all the board members to do, regardless of how you vote today, is to, uh, look them up and see what they're about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm planning on it. We can look it up on the internet.
Yeah, and, and I can, and I can share some things with you, but, uh, again, I'll be, uh, uh, limited what I share with you just based on-
Yeah, you're, you're, you're the opposition.
But, uh, but particularly the, uh, who, when, who they start, who has started the organization and where their funding comes from would be of interest to you, and what other, what other, uh, goals those funding sources pursue would be of interest to you, okay?
Okay, so I will make a motion that we, um, vote on, do I have to say approve?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve, um, F two, which states waive requirements of district policy sixty-five, ten for PEN of Florida.
I'll second that motion.
All right, it's been, uh, moved by Mrs. Crawford that we accept item F two, uh, recommendation by PEN of Florida, uh, policies, uh, waive requirements of district policy six, five, one, zero for PEN of Florida, and it was second by Mr. Buckles. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Nay?
Aye.
Okay, all right, motion does not ca- oh, I see your mouth open.
I, I'm-
Did I come out?
No, just wanted a recommendation of having some more information about them.
Yes.
But, yes.
Okay. All right, uh-
Okay, so we need to know the vote.
Buckles and Pickens, yes.
Holly and I voted to follow the advice of the attorney.
And Gilliard, McInnes, and Crawford, no. Nay.
Okay.
Hey, so, uh-
Moving right along.
F, F two, uh, does not-
Let me ask you this, this really doesn't table it. This, this really is, we voted it down and, and it'd have to be brought back for us to reconsider it, or-
Can that happen?
I don't, I, well, I don't know, they might choose to take us to court, which could cost lots of money. I'm just, it's already been voted on, but I don't know that-
Can we just say we weren't ready to vote in the positive because we don't know enough about it?
Then the motions will have to be rescinded, uh, simply, and, and I would have preferred tabling, but, as opposed to not having enough information and, and trusting what Mark has said, that's why I went nay. But if, if you rescind your motions, uh, and then we table it until, because-
I don't know that you can do that, you'd have to ask the attorney if you could do that.
Yeah, she can change her vote and she can, that can be, all be amended or fixed, you haven't moved on from that.
Okay, from that item.
So, you want to make a clarification if, if-
She wants to-
Okay, I want to rescind my motion and restate it, or make a different motion?
Table it.
Okay.
Just rescind your motion then.
Okay, I rescinded my motion, and now I would like to make a motion that we table-
He has to rescind his second.
And I rescind my second.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we table item F two for further information.
I second that.
Okay, it's been, uh, motioned that we table item F two and, by Mrs. Jane Crawford, and second by Mr. Bud McInnes. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposers? Hearing none, motion carries five, zero, that item F two be tabled. I like that better, too.
Yeah, that will come up on the next agenda.
Yes, sir, and we'll, we'll have time to-
Somebody needs to get us some more information.
Check into it, yes, please.
To get some more direction from the board, is there anything in particular you'd like for me to ask from PEN regarding this?
The supporting organizations, uh, number one, um, what is required of those that become members and their dues?
Yeah, and what their goals are.
Even, even if, even if we don't like that, we're still going to be in trouble if we don't, I, I mean, I, I think you're good table it.
I see what you, I know what you mean.
But you're, it's just-
But at least we're giving due diligence.
Before I vote yes, I want to know what I'm voting yes on.
Just tell Charlie, you guys get together and give Rick the rec, you know, what he needs to recommend.
We'll move to the next step, and I'll try to let them know that the board's not finished with the discussion.
All right.
Yes.
I say go on one.
You can just use the mic there if you want to, or come up, okay.
Oh, my God. F five is the next.
No, no, um, I do want to apologize to the board, it was not F five that I intended to pull, it was H five, and I don't, I don't quite know how to get out of that because we've already approved the agenda, but what I could do is just, um-
I can amend my motion to-
No, no, oh, I, I intended to pull the one, uh, with Crescent City, uh-
H five.
Yes, and, and I, I made a mistake and got it right here, but I wrote F five on it.
Just let him amend it.
Since I made the motion, can I just say that I made a mistake, and I, we, instead of, well, I, I feel like, you know, I didn't get it clarified. F five should have been left off of the, uh, approval of the consent agenda.
Should have been on it.
Should have been on it.
Should have, should have been left on the consent agenda, and that's the Children's Reading Center Charter School Financial Statement for October twenty nineteen, and mistakenly, uh, we wanted it to be H five after the fact, out-of-state travel for Crescent City High School jobs for Florida graduates. I'll need a second to do that.
I'll second that.
All right.
Okay, all right, it's been motion-
Now it's the vote on it.
Okay, okay, all right.
All right, motion by Mr. Buckles, second by Mrs. Crawford, all in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none, motion carries five, zero, and again, I apologize. I printed it out, but at the top I wrote F five instead of H five.
You're a human being.
My, my concern, oh, well, we can wait now. Yeah, we can wait until we get to H three and then it'll come right after that one, I, I do apologize. All right, let's go to, uh, G three.
Okay, G three is Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Palatka Recreation Department, and, um, Thomas said he would be happy to talk to us about that.
Right, and I'm actually, um, gonna have Randy Hestrom come up and talk to you, but before he does, um, and I know it's getting late and we've kind of, uh, we've, you've been kind of gotten track on, off track on this agenda just because it's getting late, but, with all that said, I just wanted to publicly, uh, recognize Randy Hestrom and brag on him a little bit. He's, he's, uh, as y'all know, taken over student services and he's, um, actively looked for ways to reach out to kids who may have even been kicked out of school and continue to educate them. You know, he, he's a, he leads with his heart and he does a great job, and, and I just wanted to say that publicly. I don't say it enough to him, even privately, but he does, yeah, he does a great job, so.
I say, I brag on him way, way too much.
This is one other good example of just things that he does unsolicited, just, you know, he takes the initiative to just think outside the box to help our kids, so.
That's wonderful, thank you for saying that, Thomas.
Okay, uh, Mr. Searcy and, uh, Thomas Bowlin came to me last year when we had, uh, you know, we do have a lot of kids that do get put up for expulsion in our school system, uh, and we're trying to come up with many, you know, alternative ways to keep them educated and also keep the kids at the school safe at the same time. So, uh, dealing with, uh, the mayor, uh, of Palatka, Terrell Hill, uh, the superintendent, Thomas Bowlin, and some gentlemen from Alachua County, and, uh, going over there and seeing what they're doing, uh, we came up with, uh, the recreational department, the old post office building, which is right across the street here, uh, they have a, a director over there, a City of Palatka Recreation Director, so I, I joined in with them, we had several meetings, we talked about what they would like to do, and we were basically wanting a safe haven for kids to come to in the afternoons, okay, along with recreational, uh, so what I did was agree to buy five, uh, desktop computers to be used over there for kids, and two laptops to be used, uh, for kids to come that need to be tutored or need to be on Odysseyware or do research, favor, well, within the community to where they can come. So, along with that, I provided, uh, a mentor that I would pay, which is, uh, Mr. Mulberry, who works with about fifteen students in Putman County, also provide them with a teacher over there, six hours a week, so that, uh, the last week we left with was, uh, from two o'clock to seven o'clock, it will be open, uh, usually Monday through Thursday, they do things on the weekends, so they alternate those hours, but we've paid Pamela Hitchcock, which we, we, we're gonna pay her to, uh, work six, she's a retired teacher from Connecticut that's moved down here and, uh, background in E S E, uh, she also has some mental health parts, so she can do the mentoring and so on. So, we've joined with them to be able to have a safe haven, even when kids are expelled from the school system.
Thank you.
Has a place to where they can go. The Palatka Police Department is, uh, working with us also, so they'll have off-duty officers going in there and mentoring kids, uh, along with Mr. Mulberry and so on, if kids are struggling with their academics, they have a safe place to go to work on a computer and also have a teacher there that can help with them.
Thank you so much, thank you so much.
So, even though when, when we're doing the expulsions, which we have to do, uh, we still have an opportunity to tell those that we do have a place where you can go, and a teacher will be paid to be there and work with those people.
So, so they'll still be able to get their credits that will count, even though they're expelled from it?
There's a lot of different ways we could do that, we could go through Florida Virtual, we could go through some Odyssey, we could set them up with that, um, but the biggest thing, you know, is having a teacher there when they start to struggle, that they know they can go there, and we're, we're looking at putting the teacher there from, there's also gonna be basketball and recreational and fun things for the kids to do under secret. It's, well, they will play there at those places, uh, they're gonna try to do that, but this will be right across the street over here where they'll have the mentoring and they're provided the, uh, desktop computers that they can, they can work on and so on, and they're gonna try to show them motivational movies and things like that.
So, they'll keep up with like attendance and-
Odysseyware and-
The Odysseyware.
Hours and completion on that.
Some of our-
And if they don't come, they can't go to the recreation.
Very few, very few of the students that we've had to expel, and I served, you know, the last year on the expulsion committee, you know, actually go away without being, having the opportunity to be served, but the opportunity to have a teacher to come in and, and Reverend Mulberry to be there, uh, makes it a whole different set of circumstances.
Sports is a, a draw, too.
Well, whatever kind of sports they, they do, it's, Randy's on the right path to trying to find a way to serve them.
Definitely.
And that way, you know, a lot of them, even if they want to be on the Odysseyware, if they don't do the work and they're not pushed to do it, it's like having Aaron McNeil in here earlier, if you don't have somebody working that cares about them, they can't push the kids if they're-
Relationship is a very big issue.
Yes, relationship, relationship, relationship.
And Captain Mulberry can do that, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay, I would like to make- Okay, I would like to make a motion to vote to approve the memorandum of understanding with the City of Palatka Recreation Department.
I'll second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mrs. Crawford that we accept the memorandum of understanding with the City of Palatka Recreation Department and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none, the motion carries five zero.
Okay, the next one is H three, and I don't know that we need to discuss it anymore.
No, that one we said we are tabling.
Right, but we have to vote to table. Okay. I make a motion that we table item H three.
I'll second.
It's been motioned that item H three requests to pay tutors out of the Title I funds be tabled by Mrs. Jane Crawford and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. All right, H five deals with Crescent City after the fact. And, and my only comment, I know what this program does, I've seen it, I saw Palatka highs. They got their information in in time to change the, the mode of operations in a timely manner. Transportation, I said operation, transportation on how they would get there. This is great, I'm not concerned about that, but it's the timely manner. And so all we're saying is get it in, because this is Washington DC.
And the kids have already gone.
Across the street.
Right. The kids have already gone, which is what Rick's letter is.
I understand, I understand. No, ma'am, yes, you, you, I'm just simply saying.
Why didn't it get in before?
Right, right. PHS was in on time, and they went the same place, same time.
That's correct.
Same back channel, same network, so that's all I'm saying. It's great, I'm not arguing, but DC is a distance.
Yes, ma'am.
And, okay, that, that's all I wanted to say.
You're saying people need to do stuff when they're supposed to do it.
When they're supposed to do it.
I can understand a sport where they didn't know they were gonna make it to regional or whatever, that is understandable. But, but if PHS got theirs in well in advance, this one should have been in.
The only thing I can think of is if they didn't get enough money and time to do it before.
I would, I would say that that's probably what occurred.
Well, they should have let you know so you could cut them a check. That's what I'm saying.
At her own purse?
No, I'm talking about his check.
Actually, since Mr. Stout is here, what we did is PHS did not have the money also to go. But there was a way that we had, they were gonna pay for it out of internal accounts and reimburse as J F G. Out of his, not out of his purse.
Out of JT Stout's account?
So it may really have been that Crescent City.
Okay, okay, I can understand that.
Crescent City actually was paid for by Heather Beaven, the C E O of Jobs for Florida Graduates. If you look at actually who paid for it, well, they're to pay it back. But that might have been the reason why they were lacking in making this happen is because of the money. And we worked it out on Palatka High School's end further in advance.
Okay, all right, understandable.
I don't, I don't a hundred percent know that that's the case, but I do know that we had to work in advance to make Palatka High Schools work.
That was our summer training, so we're allowing you to see that we didn't just go and hang out, we were listening. Remember the thing we did on field, you know, field trips? Our group pulled it at the summer summit, and these were some of the things that districts were concerned about, and so.
Yeah, but I believe it's probably the funding.
That's your money at work.
You were a principal, I remember you always having after the fact.
You might be right.
We do want to stress, and Laura and I talked about this, it's up to each school's administration to work this out. You know, we're not gonna flood them here, but it's, each school needs to take that responsibility.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm telling you.
It looks like they did.
The program, I mean, it's, it's, it's not the teacher or anybody, the program, I know what it's doing.
Well, I know they all worked very hard to raise money. I know Becky's group did, and so I'm sure Kelly's group did as well.
And if they fall short in, in the future, just.
You're gonna pay for it.
Give us a call, and, and we'll do something, and I'm not just lip service, we'll, we'll help out, because this is worth it. But we can't keep doing after-the-fact things, that's scary. Okay, all right, I can't offer the motion, can I, Mrs.?
Give the vice chair the gavel, and they'll, they'll let you make a motion and rescind it.
Holly? I think she pulled it, didn't she?
Yes, I pulled it, that's why I can't. All right, I offer a motion that we accept item H five after the fact regarding Crescent City, jobs for Florida graduates going to Washington DC.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Gilliard that we accept item H five after the fact out-of-state travel Crescent City High School jobs for graduate, Florida graduates, and a second by Ms. Crawford. All in fa, do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Okay, and the last one is J one. I just have a question about this job description that's, we are being asked to vote on. And how is it different from the disposition now? And how does it affect the person that's in this position now?
Which are doing these jobs now.
Which job description? Oh, sorry, coordinator homeless education, I'm sorry.
Okay, the only difference in that job description is before that job description dealt with homeless education and foster students. And the fostering has been taken out because it's not allowable. That's, that is the only difference in that job description, it does not change anything of the impact. It is just trying to make sure the job description matches what is actually being done by that position.
Okay, so it's not gonna affect the person that's in that position now?
No, not at all.
The only piece that will be taken out away from that person is having to deal with fostering.
It just had the words in the description of that, and that, those words needed, needed to come out of the description.
Awesome.
That was it.
And, and do we have a senior accountant?
We are hoping to, once the job description is approved.
Is approved.
They will be able to finish up their processes. Can you add that? Okay, that answers my questions.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we approve item J one, where is it? H I?
R H.
J. J one, personnel matters.
H and I, J.
Second it.
All right, it's been motioned by Mrs. Jane Crawford that we now accept item J one Personnel Matters and second by Mr. Bud McInnis. All, well, discussion?
Did someone else pull that also?
I was pulling it.
I was.
I was gonna pull it, Holly was gonna pull it. Yes, same question, yes, sir. All right, so hearing, well, question has been entertained. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. We are now moving out of our consent agenda into emergency items, and we do have two.
One.
No.
One, one emergency item.
Personnel allocation change number.
You got it.
Oh, okay. I said two, okay. All right, the emergency item, 2019, 2020 Personnel allocations change number eleven point one zero. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I move we approve the emergency item 2019, 2020 Personnel Allocation Change Number Eleven Point One Zero. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Buckles that we accept 2019, 2020 Personnel Allocation Change Number Eleven Point One Zero. Justification, explanation, time sensitive. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. We are now out of emergency session. We have no unfinished business and no new business. We're now ready for our reports. Mrs. Crawford, we started with you on pulling consent items, so we'll start with Mrs. Pickens and move to her right.
I would just really like to give a couple of shout-outs. First, at the F S B A conference, Renee Huff came, and our group was, the advanced manufacturing was part of the C T E stroll. And there were only like eight other schools, I think that's a really big honor, and so it was very enjoyable, and we did have the best booths, that's for sure. But thank you for all you do. And the Crescent City, pardon me?
One of six.
One of six, okay, get that right.
It was only a few.
And the Crescent City High School band gave a winter concert at the First Presbyterian Church in Crescent City, and it was excellent. And there, it was well-attended, and the, the community really came out and supported them, and it was, it was excellent to, to see them. But the highlight was Ms. Jones actually played a flute solo, she played Silent Night, it was, it was really good. And then another one, Crescent City Raider Basketball defeated Interlochen at Crescent City, Ms. Gilliard was there. It was a good game, and it was a little rough officiating-wise, but it was, it was a really good game. And always good when your team comes out on the top. And then I, I got to be a substitute for Ms. Gilliard at the F F A sub-district, and I'd never done anything like that, and boy, was I impressed. What great students we have involved in that program. And, and then my son and I got to see Frozen Junior, and again, just unbelievable. So that's all I have.
Mr. Buckles?
I have seen a few things lately that have concerned me involving bus transportation, where buses are dropping and picking up students, and cars are just almost running over some of our kids. And I talked to the superintendent briefly before the meeting that I was gonna bring it up, and I did encounter a lady on, on Facebook last night who had, had observed, right, you know, right here in Putnam County, a car almost run over a middle school child. And I just, and the superintendent, I'm sure will take care of this and get with the sheriff and whoever else is in traffic control to let our transportation and bus drivers know they should report these type of things. And I'm, I'm almost to the point, Thomas, I don't know if we have cameras that can take a picture of a car, its license plate when they zip by a bus, but it would almost be tempting if you've got a bus driver who has some problems in an area, try to find a way to, to maybe, you know, get a camera that can find out who these people are, because it's so dangerous. I mean, and nobody up here doesn't agree. I mean, we all, look at the superintendent who lost his daughter, and, you know, in the traffic accident and all that, it's just, it's horrible.
Heart wrench.
But it's something we just don't want to let up on, it's just part of what the job and.
Madam Chair, could I respond to Mr. Buckles, one of his issues there with the buses? We met with, in Interlochen, Price Middle School, and I'm not sure if that's the school you're referring to, but.
Maybe, I don't.
There is an issue, and we met with one of the county commissioners and went out there, and there's a problem with 315 not having a crossing guard or a crosswalk. A lot, what happens is a lot of the parents park on the other side of 315, and kids walk across 315. Mr. McInnis was actually out there and, and met with us, so they are looking at trying to provide a crosswalk. But on advice of Mr. Taylor, we wanted to make sure that we sent a message out through the school to parents saying, you know, you need to be responsible, because once kids leave that campus, you know, the parents need to be, you know, made aware there is a risk involved. And the school has made accommodations, trying to, you know, move the parking over to the bus pickup after the buses leave and all that, but, you know, it is a concern, but we've come together and.
Everything we can do, and I know you will, Rick, because you, you love them just like we all do. But anything you can do to kind of heighten the awareness, it's Christmas, nobody's really thinking about anything but getting home and getting ready for the holidays, and it's kind of like the end of school, you've got to stay on top of it. And, and I think the lady on Facebook, she was very glad that, you know, at least we care, and I know every one of us really do. So, thanks. I'd like to mention one more thing, and, and I don't know, I know that Rick is trying really hard to work with other county agencies, whether it's the County Commission, City of Palatka, Town of Crescent City, doesn't matter, Chamber of Commerce. None of us is as strong as all of us, and if we work together, I, I, I just want to say that I was called to be an honorary pallbearer for Mr. McGivern, who recently died. And he taught me a long time ago that, as, as his time on the city commission, that, that you have to work together. We have to work with the county commission, they have to work with us, the chamber needs to work with us, and, and don't view us as some kind of entity off to ourselves, off to ourselves, because everything we do impacts everything they do. And if we can get together and we can build sidewalks together, or widen a road, or a driveway, or whatever it is, we have to work together. And I know the superintendent's got his hands full, but Thomas, thank you for keeping him in line with request and things like that, because as we get them, we're gonna pass them on to you guys to take care of, so.
I get a call, I'll pass it to Mr. Bowlin, and he takes care of it.
He does, he does an excellent job, whether it's scraping a dead dog off the road or whatever it is, you know.
Oh, boy.
We get it all. That, that's, that concludes my remarks, you, you guys have a merry Christmas, I don't mind saying that.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mr. McInnis?
Okay. The avid presentation today was wow. Those young people are seeing 2020 and more, and I applaud what they're doing and everybody involved in that program. I got to participate in my first chili judging competition ever, and I enjoyed it, didn't put any pounds on, but it was worthwhile.
Never do.
I know. And just as the superintendent said, I did attend the mid-block crossing field review. And one thing that probably, as the superintendent said, is parents are not really taking into consideration where they're putting their child when they ask the child to cross the street, because on Mondays, the public library is closed, so it's a parking lot full of picker-uppers. So I would suggest some of those parents to do like the smarter parents would be doing, parking at the Mormon Church, which is on the same side of the road, and alleviate the crossing, because we witnessed too many.
Close calls.
Possible situations at that little period of time. I did enjoy the C T E stroll with Renee, and that was a great presentation. I was very proud to be a partner of Putnam County School District. I attended, well, I was a rapper at the Browning Pierce Elementary Santa Shop.
And they were so happy that you were there.
It was fun.
They said it was, they said you were great.
Oh, and you said rapper.
I can rap.
I was kidding. Okay, at Santa's gift shop, I was getting ready for you to.
Santa's Secret Shop.
I might could put something in a plastic garbage bag, but that would be about the best I could do.
My observation there, you know, the, walking to the school, you can tell all the things that they've done, landscaping and just the whole climate there, kids walking in line, they're well-behaved. Hopefully, none of that will escape over the Christmas break, and it won't be sucked out of their head about how to behave and what their, their goal is there. But I do want to say something, and now I know what the word is. I noticed on Facebook, Browning Pierce did the data visualizations, which is impressive, showing all the growth. And for me, I gotta see the picture that way, and I, that is impressive. And I just want to say that, I did have the, I was entertained last night at Q I Roberts, their band and chorus winter concert. It was great, and it's unfortunate that Peyton did not have a microphone, because she did Ave Maria, and it was superb, and they had five marimbas again. And it's just incredible what these young people are learning. what these young people are learning, first year band students. I'm not a band geek, but my family members are.
Yes, they will.
So goes to show that.
Tracy especially.
And I just want to thank everybody, the staff, support, and teachers, parents, volunteers, who just are, always come together this time of year to make our children nurtured, loved, and feel like they're very important, and that's it. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. McInnis. Mrs. Crawford?
Well, I too was a judge at the Chili Cook Off, and I just want to say, for anybody who's involved, any kind of food cook offs y'all have, I'd like to be a judge.
Count me in.
Because it was really fun, and I really like food. And I know that just kind of, it's just a happy time down here, and it was a lot of fun.
Let me tell you who can cook. That's transportation and food service ladies. That can...
Okay, moving right along. I got to be the moderator at the CLO, CL Overturf Spelling Bee today, and it's usually just like a really quick process, but it was not today. We had a fight to the finish with two precious girls. It just kept going back and forth and back and forth, because you know if the last one misses a word, then you gotta go back to the next one and go... And I wish I remembered their names, but CLO will be well represented at the county spelling bee. FSBA, it's, to me, always wonderful, and I always learn so much, and I got to go to so many different types of workshops we all did, and we brought back a wealth of information. Renee and her crew, you know, they were always special, but they did a great job representing Putnam County, one of six schools that were there. So that was quite an honor. Another wonderful honor was that our own Superintendent Rick Surrancey was one of the runner-ups for the state superintendent, which is quite an honor, but we gonna get him there. We gonna get him to be the number one superintendent in the state of Florida. So that was quite an honor to be a witness to that. Tomorrow, I think Bud and I are going to do interviews with the JFG students at Palacka High School, so I'm looking forward to that. I know Becky's done a lot to get them prepared for that. And I need to say something about Erin Mace, too, along with all of her students. I'll never forget several years ago when she called me and said, "Ms. Jane, I'm thinking about applying for a job at Palacka High School. What do you think?" And I started crying, because I knew...
You're kidding.
I knew that Erin, you know, she had graduated, gotten a master's, started law school, didn't like law school.
Law school's not for everybody.
Wasn't her calling.
Wouldn't recommend it.
Yeah.
Wasn't her calling.
Before she started. But anyway, I said, "Erin, I think you will be a wonderful teacher." You know, and teaching's not easy now, and, but I know she has the heart. I can't remember which kid said, or what exactly they said, but that it was all about knowing they were loved when they walk in that classroom. And I know that Erin Mace loves those kids. She texts me all the time about them and their accomplishments, and I'm so glad she made the decision to become a teacher, come back to Putnam County and become a teacher. Okay. I was with Holly at the FFA subdistricts. You know, every year, those FFA kids just totally blow us away, amaze us. I was OCC opening and closing, and we've got some great kids in Putnam County and in the districts surrounding Putnam County. Frozen Junior, again, you know, Mr. Pignato never fails us. He brings out the best in all of our students, and what I think is so great, because it didn't used to be this way many years ago, all of our schools can participate in these musical theater productions. You know, they all have the opportunity to audition, and I think it's a great thing that we're keeping the arts alive in Putnam County schools. And along with what Mr. Buckles says, I do my banking at First Coast Community Credit Union, and, you know, when I'm trying to pull out, I have to wait for cars, and several times over the last few months, it's been when Putnam Academy for Arts and Sciences releases in the afternoons. Those flashing lights might as well not be there. Nobody pays attention to it, and I was blowing my horn and shaking my finger and screaming, "You better slow down."
Well, that would've scared me.
Well, I know it didn't, but they don't even slow down. And I tried to figure out, why would they slow down on St. John's Avenue and not slow down on Palm Avenue? One thing is, you can hardly see those two blinking lights. I've come from both directions, and I don't know if they're not blinking bright enough or not blinking high enough. I don't even know if we're responsible for that, because it is a charter school, but they're our kids.
We do work with that.
They're our kids, and something needs to be done about the speeding along Palm Avenue when CLO, when pause is taken in probably and releasing.
I know Thomas has worked on it before, but there is a dispute between DOT and I believe that either the county or the city on the signage, because we...
Is that what it is?
I think they've resolved it, and they've got the smaller signs, but they don't do anything.
There's not, I haven't seen a sign.
It may need the letter of the law.
Yeah, but you can't even see it, David.
I know.
I want you to look at it the next time you go.
I've been in here and reported to the board before.
I don't want to throw law enforcement under the bus, but, you know, we can't arrest anybody for...
No, I know.
We'd like you just shaking our fingers.
Yeah.
They can...
And possibly, Ms...
And there's kids crossing that street there. I mean, it scared me to death. They go over to that bakery.
We don't hear from the parents and the bus drivers, we don't know. So, I mean, that's, you and Sharon have to pass it on to us and what we need for us to do, and I'm sure law enforcement will do anything they can to step up, you know, and all you gotta do is stop one or two, and it'll make a big statement, or, I don't know. Rick will, he'll figure it out. He knows what, he got staff, he'll work on it.
Okay, and the last thing is, I'd just like to wish everyone, all of our teachers, staff, administrators, students, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Wonderful.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Crawford. Real quick, conference in Tampa, superb, every breakout session I attended just truly enlightened me and informed me of some things I was not aware of, and hopefully, it will help to make us better board members...
Yes.
...and serve in our community. One of the ones that truly got me was what Orange County was doing with their faith-based organizations. They named their low-performance schools, those churches got involved, and it wasn't about religion, it was about those children and what they needed and supplying it. And so Mrs. Whitehurst has that vision, and I've already passed that information on to her. And the other part of the conference that stuck out was the ethics training. Every time I go down there and get that ethics training, it scares me to death. I don't want anybody giving me any gifts. I don't care if it's not $50 or more, don't give me any gifts.
You can give them to me if they're under $50.
We want to thank the Palacka Daily News for their coverage on jobs for Florida graduates meeting their needs. You all truly work with us, and we appreciate it, because there are a lot of people that don't know what's going on, and so, I'm talking about that percentage that receive the newspaper, and it causes us to smile. For the city commissioners, for instructing our future leaders in government, if you noticed in the picture, you saw one of our own school board employees, he's Commissioner Justin Campbell, but he works with our 21st Century. He was instructing them. I was there that night, because our sorority will turn 100 years old January the 19th of 2020, and so they did a proclamation for us, and I was there, and I'm so glad that I got to see these, those young people run that particular meeting. I'd like to send a shout out to Mr. Joe Thierbo at QI for being nominated for the state award for innovation. And to shout out to Dr. Shelby, Mr. Stout, Mr. Helms, and Mr. Thierbo on keeping a lid on the schools with basketball, soccer, weightlifting, wrestling, wrestling, as Allred would say, and all these winter sports, the ACT test, and the SAT, and all of these things that are going on, you all are just managing, and we appreciate it. I'd like to commend those, Mr. Weaver, and those that were involved in handling the incident at QI and Price. There are some things that we don't like to do, but then, when we do what we have to do, we still try to make a way for them through the program that Mr. Hedstrom is bringing. So we're not about putting children out of school, but we're about making sure that they're safe and trying to do all of those things. I want to congratulate Lafara Davis. Last Saturday, they performed The Wiz at CLO. My goodness, the lion, he was a hoot. I mean, just to know that Lafara is ours, and that she has not gone on, even though she lives in Jacksonville and worships there, she still cares about our children.
She's here every week.
Every week. This is the season, and several board members have wished a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to families, students, staff, et cetera, but we do realize that there are some children that may not have a Santa if it were not for Project Praise, so we should send a shout out to them. Then there is Grace and Truth, where Dr. Kirby Fells is the pastor. They have a prison ministry, and what they do every year, the daughter Cathy McCoy is one of our parapros at Browning Pierce. A part of her ministry is, they take children that parents are incarcerated, she say, some of them, the mama and the daddy are incarcerated, and they are providing gifts for them tonight at Quality Inn at 7:00, and I will be reading to them towards the night before Jesus came. But that twist on that. But there are a lot of great people here in Putnam County that don't just talk it, they show their love and support for these young people. And so with that being said, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone.
Hold attorney.
Mr. Attorney?
We have no report, but I want to thank you all for agreeing to let me fill in for Charlie.
Anytime. Yeah.
And making me feel comfortable.
You're a lot better looking, that's good to have.
All right, Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, and I want to thank Lex for being here. He's been a great addition. He actually has hours here now, where he meets with us, and y'all are welcome to come meet with him on Tuesdays, right?
Yeah, Tuesday, Tuesday mornings.
Come eat with him?
Meets with him.
Eat with him, oh.
Right, you can eat, too, but...
Tuesday around.
But I gotta bring it.
What time, Mr. Superintendent?
I usually get here at 9:00, and I usually leave at noon, unless there's...
9:00 to noon?
9:00 to noon.
Okay, all right, gotcha.
But thank you for doing that. And by the way, Charlie got called, not to the principal's office, but to the governor's office. He's actually, you know, meeting with the governor today, was invited.
Yes.
Hopefully, everything will turn out. I told him to ask him for more money.
For Putnam County. Is that a quid pro quo that you're getting Charlie all wrapped up in?
Don't want to say that.
I don't care.
I do want to say, this has been a long meeting, and thank you for...
Oh, I'm teasing.
...allowing us to present today. But just want to remind you, we have one meeting in December and one in January, so we're covering a lot of business during those meetings. I want to highlight Tanya Whitehurst. She was, I always like to highlight our staff members who are taking offices statewide. I mentioned to you, Thomas Bowen is, has an office, he's an officer in his organization as well as Rhonda Odom, but Tanya is selected as a, help me out, Tanya, for the, she's a board officer, or board officer for the FASPA group, and that stands for?
Board Association of School Personnel Analysis.
FASPA. Congratulations, Tanya.
So we appreciate you doing that, and it's good to be represented at the statewide level.
Thank you.
Want to recognize Kim. Kim Mann is filling in for Rhonda Odom, but she's our new Director of Finance.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kim, and welcome aboard.
Kim's one of our own, too, by the way.
Alumni, PHS alumni.
Yep, product of Putnam.
Alumnus.
Thank goodness you didn't have Ms. Crawford for a teacher.
Want to thank the faculty and the parents and our maintenance department for responding to the situation at Awkwila this weekend. Don't know if you realize, they were hit by either a tornado or some really strong winds, and thank God the building was not, didn't really receiving substantial damage that we know of, but trees were blown everywhere. And Mr. Bowen and myself were out there yesterday, but they were out there over the weekend. I think parents helped out and just had that place cleaned up, ready to go for the kids, so...
Awesome.
And we're very fortunate, you know, that we didn't have any more damage.
Right.
Ms. Whitehurst and myself went to Interlochen High School yesterday, and the three principals from Interlochen met and received a check for $4,000 each, not from us, but from Dollar General.
Yeah, oh, I saw that.
And Interlochen, it's posted, was, they had the most business, I guess, in this area, so...
It was in the top 10 in their whole corporation, like in the nation.
Right.
Wow.
Right. So we, you know, that's some good money for our schools, and actually, Justin went out and did a little interview, but I think our principals already have spent it or think of what they're gonna spend it on. I want to point out one thing to you. I've talked to you about this before, and we have posters for each of you, as many as you want, to hang up in public places, but this is the Chris Hare presentation, and we are actually presenting this to all of our high school students in January, mid-January, and there's actually one session for the community. That's January 14th at 6:00 PM at the Jim Pignata Theater, but Mr., yeah, this is here, whoever wants, we have more in the office.
I'll pick mine up.
Okay.
I'll pick one up.
But he is a former professional basketball player, has a wonderful testimony, and he speaks to the opioid crisis, and really, really has a good track record, so this is actually generated by our community. They came to us, and every dollar that is spent to pay for him came from the community and private donors, because they have such a willingness to want to see things changing in our community. So that is definitely an area that we want to work on. So whatever you can do to expand that, we want to make sure we have a great crowd there. Last thing, our Palacka Young Professionals, which I know Charlie is a member of, is having a meeting tonight as we speak at St. John's River State College, and they're having a number of these meetings, and I've just encouraged you to be a part of that whenever it's possible. But they're trying to bring people together and talk about revitalization, and just give people an opportunity to share their thoughts about that. So I'm gonna leave here and probably drop by and just stick my head in there, but I commend them for doing that. So thanks again for a great meeting, and thanks for your attention for our presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else to come before the board? If not, this meeting is adjourned.